Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Felicia Moore. I'm president of the Atlanta City Council, and it is an honor and privilege to be here, along with all of our panelists, because we are celebrating a lifesaving event, Maddie's Call, and its 15-year anniversary. I am so surprised that it has been 15 years. But in 15 years, Maddie Moore has been able to save many, many lives here in the state of Georgia, as well as the city of Atlanta. So first of all, I just want to welcome you and give you a look at history of how we got to this day. And I was a council member for District 9 in 2004 when we got a call. Well, I saw on the news, actually, that there were two people missing, and this is in April. And one had Alzheimer's, and the other had schizophrenia. And so I said, hmm, I hope that they are found. And so when one was found and the other was not, I said, after church, I'm going to stop by the house of the Moore family and see how I can assist. I was able to do that and meet their family. Maddie Moore has a wonderful, supportive family who are all concerned about her missing. There were several attempts to find her. There was a massive look for her. I know V-103 radio station and others got together. It were hundreds of people knocking on doors, looking in backyards, looking in the woods near our house, trying to find Miss Moore. And then one day after visiting the house, I actually went home and saw on the news that there was a Levi's call. And it kind of rang a bell on us. And I said, hmm, if we have Levi's calls and other alerts, why don't we have one for those who are mentally impaired who may wander away from their home? And so the next time I went to the home, I talked to the family and said, would you be willing to allow Miss Moore's name to be added to a call? And they said they did. And so I started working with the Atlanta Police Department on some standard operating procedures that would make these alerts quicker and make us, as a city, move forward. And so we ended up finding Miss Moore's remains in December of 2004. But the alert, the Maddie's Call alert, was enacted April 28, 2006. So I would like to introduce one of many people who helped to find Miss Moore ultimately and was searching. I would like to introduce to you all, Mr. Samplez. He's a founder and chairman of the Board of Alpha Team K-9 Search and Rescue Incorporated. Mr. Samplez and his K-9 Denali, I believe it is, an English yellow Labrador fowl, the remains of Miss Maddie Moore. So Mr. Samplez says that that search changed his team and their life forever. And I'll let him come in his own words to talk about how his team helped to find Miss Moore's remains. Mr. Samplez.
Thank you, Council President Moore. Yeah, as you said, I am the founder of Alpha Team K-9 Search and Rescue. And I'd like to take a moment to thank our team president, Joel Barrett, our vice president, Beverly Benton, and all of the Alpha Team members for everything that they do to bring the lost and missing home. In collaboration with local, state, and federal officials and community leaders like yourselves, it's an honor for our team to serve the community and to be a part of this celebration for Miss Maddie Moore. 15 years ago, my yellow Labrador, Denali, and my fellow searchers with the Alpha Team K-9 Search and Rescue Group found Miss Moore after she had been missing for eight months. Although bringing closure to families in the community is a large part of what search teams do, this was never the outcome that anyone would have wanted. For us, the best search is actually no search at all. And our participation in this event to raise awareness for lost and missing persons is an important part of our charter. Alpha Team is an all-volunteer, nonprofit organization, and we do not charge for our services. We're totally free. The capabilities that professional search and rescue teams like ours bring to missing person incidents are critical. Our K-9 teams train, on average, for more than two years to achieve all of the certifications necessary to become a deployable asset. The training of a search and rescue team involves advanced navigation skills, clue awareness, emergency medicine, radio operations, search strategy, and incident command and control in coordination with law enforcement colleagues. Lost person behavior, statistical norms, search coordination, man trackers, and, most importantly, K-9 operations, and now even unmanned aerial drones, are able to be deployed by Alpha Team at a moment's notice to bring the lost home. But none of this can happen without critical notifications and awareness first. Maddie's Call gives teams like ours the ability to help our partners in law enforcement to advance the search for families throughout the community. And for that, we will forever be grateful for the lives it saves. Finding Miss Moore and the subsequent development of Maddie's Call for the emergency notification of disabled, elderly, or impaired persons by the members on this call today, with the leadership support from the Alzheimer's Association, has saved literally countless lives in Georgia and across the United States. And it will continue to save many more. We're a part of this community and honored and humbled to be a part of the Maddie's Call celebration. I just wanted to thank everyone again on the behalf of Alpha Team for enacting this legislation in honor of Miss Moore. And with that, I'd like to pass it to House Representative, Ms. Sheila Jones. I think you're on mute.
You're muted. Thank you very much. When the Maddie's Call legislation was introduced by Councilmember Moore in the city of Atlanta, this was the beginning of making it a primary way of locating disabled or elderly persons or mentally impaired persons. The state followed what Councilmember Moore did in Atlanta, and we introduced it in the state of Georgia. I was one of the sponsors on that legislation. It was introduced in the House where it passed. Then it was introduced in the Senate where it passed. And it was later signed during our 2006 year by the governor. He signed it on April 28, 2006. The Maddie's Call activations have been steadily increasing throughout Georgia every year since 2006, partly because of the increase in the population of our aging individuals. And I want to thank Councilmember Moore for bringing this important piece of legislation, and it has helped many families since its introduction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, State Representative Jones, and thank you for sponsoring and shepherding it at the state level. As you know, many people across the state started calling the city wanting to have the same thing enacted and, you know, contribute it at the state level.
Thank you.
And also to Mr. Samplez, thank you all for what you do. I think one of the key things you mentioned is it's voluntary. And so I know that it is a labor of love that you all provide to everyone. And I certainly know that Maddie's Call and other calls out there help your work. And thank you for doing it well.
Thank you.
So I would now like to introduce Ms. Christie Moore, the granddaughter of Miss Maddie Moore. And we cannot, in this state, I don't even know how we express our gratitude to the family for allowing Miss Maddie Moore's name to be used in this way. As I hear about her from her family, she was a loving individual. We said she was always smiling. So we were instructed to smile when we say her name. And I think that she is smiling now to know that her legacy is here in the state, as well as the city of Atlanta, to helping find a missing, wandering patient. So, Ms. Christie Moore, speaking on behalf of the Moore family, please tell us your story.
Yes, thank you, Council President Moore. As Council President Moore stated, my name is Christie Moore, and I am the youngest grandchild of Maddie and Jessie Moore. And I was asked to speak on behalf of the family. And I just would like to say thank you for this wonderful celebration of not only the bill, but also my grandmother's legacy. I would also like to say thank you to those that were involved in passing the legislation at the state, as well as the city level. I know that it has helped save countless lives, as well as families. And in remembering my grandmother, there's not really a time when you don't miss someone who's played such a pivotal role in your life. But you grow and you learn to understand that you should recognize more of their legacy instead of the tragedy or the pain that was brought about by the incident that occurred. And so in that, I'd just like to share with everyone a little bit about my grandmother. She was love, she was light, she was laughter. She was the life of the party, even in her time of dealing with Alzheimer's. There was not a time, as Council President Moore stated, that she was not smiling. She was a wonderful wife, a wonderful mother, and an incredible grandmother. I like to think that, you know, she loved her children very much, but her grandchildren were her world. There was not a time that a recital happened, a sporting event happened, a cruise, whatever it is. She was going to be present, and she was going to be in that audience with a smile. If you called her on the phone to come and pick you up, she was ringing the doorbell in record time. That's just the kind of love that she brought to her family. She was truly the heartbeat of our family. And I like to think that, you know, the woman that she was is still instilled into all of her grandchildren, to all of her descendants. She will always be love and compassion. And I believe that it is very fitting that this bill was passed in her name to be able to bring that love and light and laughter to families who are now benefiting from Maddie's Call. While it is unfortunate that our grandmother is still, is not physically present with us, I truly believe that her spirit is going to continue to live on, not only through this bill, but also through her family members. So thank you again so much for recognizing her. Thank you for understanding how important it is for a legacy to live on of such an incredible woman with an invaluable presence. She will continue to live, not only through me, but through, as I said, her other descendants.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I can remember coming to the house and meeting Kenneth Moore and all the rest of the Moore family. And by the way, we shared the same last name, but we're not related. But I feel related to the family because even after the call, I met several times with the family. The family started a small foundation of their own. We participated in Alzheimer's Association memory walks. And we just continued to do a lot all in the name of Maddie Moore. And the interesting thing was, you were a little girl then.
I was very young at that time. I believe I was in the fifth grade at that time.
Well, I didn't want you to say how old you were then because you're a lovely young lady now. And I think, and I know that Maddie is smiling now because everybody, we have to congratulate her on just passing the state bar. She is now an attorney. And you will continue in your service to the community. Also know that Miss Maddie Moore was extremely loved and careful by where she worked, at the Vault Mail Center around the corner.
I have plenty of field trips there.
Oh, you did? Well, I've never actually been in the facility, but I did do know that when she was missing, many of them participated in trying to find her and subsequently donated considerably to the Alzheimer's Association through the walk. She just had, her tentacles were everywhere in the community. But I loved her dearly. Congratulations, Christie. And I know you and your family are very proud. They're proud of you. And they're also proud of Miss Maddie Moore and how even in her tragic loss, she is still around. As I was saying to you before, I know that for the family, I just am just so grateful that you allowed her name to be used. Because I'm sure when you hear Maddie's Call on the news, how does that strike you?
You know, it makes me feel good that my grandmother's legacy is continuing to just exude her personality, which is love and compassion, and that she's able to bring peace. Even though, as I said, she's not physically present, she's still able to bring peace and love to other families. And that's honestly what she would be doing to this very day if she was physically present. So I feel very proud to be her granddaughter. I feel very proud to be attached to something that is benefiting our community in a positive way.
Thank you, and thank you to your family, your wonderful representative. Thank you. So now I'd like to move on to introduce Ms. Stacy Lawrence Campbell. Now, she's an author of several books, but one is entitled, "Maddie's Call." Of all things, it was published in 2016. And so Stacy is here to tell us her story about her book. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you so much, Council President Moore. I have been in Indianapolis since 1998. But it's like I've never left Georgia, so I'd always watch the news. When I saw the news story about Miss Maddie, I just prayed, I hope they find her. I hope they find her. And unfortunately, she was not found. But I was so, so excited when you introduced the legislation for the Maddie's Call. As fate would have it, in 2013, my sister-in-law had a Maddie's Call for her because she went missing from the nursing home where she lived. She was found safe, and we were grateful for that. But unfortunately, the same year, in 2013, she died. And we had a little bit more time with her, but I know that that would not have been possible had Maddie's Call not been enacted. So years after she passed, I, again, never left my roots, and I've always had an affinity for the elderly. So because of the legislation, I wrote the book, "Maddie's Call," as a tribute to the elderly who are lost, who may be having issues with dementia, just as a tribute to them, but also to family members to make sure that you take care of them, check on them, call them to see how they're doing. So I am just filled with so much gratitude for you for enacting this legislation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for your book. And I know we intersect because I'm originally from Indianapolis, Indiana, and the Maddie's Call, all these things sort of align. And, you know, one thing that I found out during... And I, you know, one thing that I found out during the time that I was helping the Moore family, my father had just been diagnosed uh with Alzheimer's. And I had started to do a little research and hadn't done a whole lot. Then when I intersected with the Moore family, I understood that I needed to know more about uh some of the things that may happen with that. So for people who are outsider, who have someone who has Alzheimer's, dementia, or any other um mental impairment, they need to know that wandering could be a part of it. We don't want, uh Mr. Samples, as he said, we prefer it, saying it's not to have to do the search, but we don't, you know, we don't want them to be caught off guard. Um, and so thank you for your book, thank you for contributing, uh and lifting up the legacy of Maddie's Call, we feel your appreciation. And so now I would love to introduce Ms. Heather Strickland, who's going to tell us about, um, you know, just how it has helped people in the state of Georgia. You have discussed the GBI, the Georgia Bureau of Investigations Act, and the importance of Maddie's Call, and how to fight Maddie's Call more importantly, Ms. Strickland.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be here with you, and I thank uh Council President Moore for the great introduction. Um, I wanted to come with the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, and I oversee the Crimes Against Disabled um Adults and Elderly Task Force, or called the CAID Task Force. Um, we uh basically expand outreach and education to public safety, public health, healthcare, mandated reporters, um, to make sure that local law enforcement and public safety in general know how to respond uh to calls dealing with Alzheimer's and dementia. Um, we uh, in the great legislation that we're talking about, and I'm gonna try to share my screen here for a minute, um, I don't know if this is gonna show up, but um the great legislation that we're talking about created um the Official Code of Georgia statute thirty-five dash one dash eight, and it states that any law enforcement agency which receives a report that a person with Alzheimer's um or dementia is missing, they shall immediately open an investigation for the purpose of determining uh their whereabouts, and that there's no policy for applying any waiting period uh to initiate this investigation. So this is really important, that local law enforcement, regardless of where the person went missing, can immediately um en- enact this uh the Maddie's Call. Um, and if they contact the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, we can assist them with statewide alerts, um, which will go out, um, and sometimes we can even send it to Florida, Alabama, and surrounding states if we think that that individual may be in their car and driving, um, we might wanna uh also uh let, let those states that surround us know that this individual may be headed their way. Um, local law enforcement can also request um that the Georgia Lottery, and this is something a lot of people don't know, um, that the Georgia Lottery can, on their lighted signs uh that scroll through convenience stores, can also share the Maddie's Call activation information. Um, here are the Maddie's Call requests, as they were saying earlier, um, since enacted. Um, in two thousand and seven, there was thirty-one Maddie's Call requests, and you can see how that number has really jumped in twenty twenty to three hundred and four. Um, unfortunately, due to the cyber attack that happened to the Georgia Department of Public Safety, the numbers for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen were not available, but I think that this is great information to show that local law enforcement um are certainly um heeding the call when they find out that someone with Alzheimer's or dementia is missing, and they want to uh let local, uh let, let people know about it.
All right, well, thank you. And um, and so the early alerts, have you found that because we're doing the early alerts, that it's making it helpful to find people?
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't have the numbers because a lot of times, um, we were, we are not um notified, or the Department of Public Safety isn't notified of all of the um, the safe um returns. Um, and so wasn't able to calculate those numbers just because a lot of that information isn't reported back to us.
Right, and I think that... Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the part where you said shall not have any delay is really helpful. So some of the other alerts, there has to be a timeframe before you can initiate it?
A lot of times, if there were runaways or something of that nature, they might, the local law enforcement may wanna wait twenty-four hours because uh, you know, the juveniles may come home. Um, but with uh Levi's Calls and Maddie's Calls, it is done immediately.
Well, thank you so much, and we certainly thank the GBI, as well as the state of Georgia, from the legislation that Ms. Jones sponsored and others, to really care for our seniors, but it's not always just seniors. Uh, there may be those with autism and other um debilitating diseases that are younger. It's just caring for people, and Maddie's Call has certainly been able to do that. And so thank you, Ms. Strickland, for that encouraging words. I do know that it's gonna be needed more than ever now that our population is aging and more people are finding themselves uh with dementia-related diseases. So thank you. And so now I would love to introduce Ms. Linda Davidson. Uh, we will, she will uh help us discuss how important uh Maddie's Call has been to the organization, because she is the executive director of the Alzheimer's Association of Georgia chapter. And I can tell you, I have had a long uh history with the Alzheimer's Association, particularly uh with Maddie's Call. I sat on the board, I was an ambassador. I tell everybody I know, as a matter of fact, just yesterday, I had a conversation with someone who mentioned that uh their parent had Alzheimer's. I said, call the Alzheimer's Association of Georgia, because this organization uh offers all kinds of resources and information, and people need to take advantage of it. It's not just the wandering piece, but there are a lot of things that you need to have in place, a lot of resources that you need. They will hold your hand and walk you through what you need to do as a caretaker, as well as one who may be um diagnosed with it. So I would love to introduce her. I'm happy to work with her and her team on this recognition. Thank you all so much for helping us to recognize the fifteenth year anniversary, and I will turn it over to you, Ms. Davidson.
Thank you so much for being such a great champion. In two thousand and six, the Alzheimer's Association worked on Maddie's Call with Councilwoman Felicia Moore and legislators to make Maddie's Call statewide. And we are grateful for the people in this state who have this critical resource that was made possible by several people you were hearing from today. Alzheimer's disease causes people to lose their ability to recognize familiar places and faces. It's common for a person living with dementia to wonder or become lost or confused, and it can happen at any stage of this disease. Six in ten people living with dementia will wonder at least once. Many do so repeatedly. Some common signs that a person with dementia may wonder are returning from a regular walk or arriving late from a drive uh that is outside what they normally do, or talking about fulfilling former obligations like going to work. Although common, wondering, as you have heard, can be very dangerous, even life-threatening, and the stress of the risk weighs heavily on caregivers and family. Here in Georgia, there are over a hundred and fifty thousand people living with Alzheimer's, and the number is expected to grow more than twenty-six percent in the next few years. Having Maddie's Call is a critical resource for Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers to locate their loved ones so quickly. We've experienced in the past where people with dementia from Florida, as you heard earlier, have been found in Florida. They decided just to continue driving, not knowing where they were and where they were going. It took law enforcement to locate this person safely through their, their resources that the caregivers may not have. You know, example of that is they can track credit card transactions. Maddie's Call has impacted so many lives in these last fifteen years. We have more information and tips to keep your loved ones safe um at ALZ.org. Um, it also now is my honor and privilege... Sorry about that delay, but I had to do it. So it is my honor and privilege to present to, for Maddie's fiftieth year anniversary in recognition of Council President Felicia Moore's tireless efforts to support the vulnerable Georgians, including those living with Alzheimer's and other dementias, their caregivers and their families. We will certainly send this to you, but again, you're such a champion, and we continue to work together and support of all Georgians statewide. Thank you.
Thank you, and certainly thank you to the Alzheimer's Association of Georgia. I cannot continue to emphasize to people that they are an excellent, excellent resource, and uh having known and worked with many other people in the organization, they are there to support you. And I appreciate that honor, but the honor goes to everyone on this call and all the council people, the mayor at the time, the state legislators at the time, the family, most importantly, for allowing her name to be used. Uh, we all have had a part in this, and should all feel proud and happy for Ms. Moore. And since you're giving out awards, I have one too. I would like to thank uh the Alzheimer's Association for their uh gift and their overall support and what they do, particularly for our aging population. You know, ironically, Ms. Maddie Moore's birthday was yesterday, and she would have turned eighty-four, which is the same age of my mom. Uh, so on behalf of everyone on today's program, I present this framed keepsake, I know it's kinda hard to see, uh but this framed keepsake to Christie and the Moore family, and we will get this to you as well. Uh, I hope you will always cherish the life and legacy of Ms. Maddie Moore. And on that note, we learned that Ms. Maddie Moore loved Garfield. And it took me a minute to figure out Garfield, the, the character, but she also loved Coca-Cola. And she always had a smile. So on the count of three, everybody get your Coca-Cola. On the count of three, we're going to salute her today with a Coke and a smile. So everybody get ready, let me make sure I got mine top off. So to a wonderful woman who um I know her family loves and cherishes and thinks about, who is saving countless lives in the state of Georgia and even across this country, because other states have instituted a similar call. Let's hold up our Coca-Cola, and then on the count of three, let's give her a toast. One, two, three.
Cheers.
Cheers.
To you, Maddie Moore, to you, the Moore family. Chrissy, tell everybody that we love them and we thank them so much for all that they've done. And to Ms. Maddie Moore, we love you. So, excuse me. So thank you to everyone who participated in today's celebration, including all of you in the listening audience. We hope you never have to use Maddie's Call, but if you do, we are thankful that we have it. So thank you, everyone, and have a safe afternoon.